Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of August 18 to order at 7:15. All members are present. I do apologize that we are a few minutes late getting started. I'd like to start off with the transmitting of Treasury warrants 4, 4A, 5, 5A, 6, 6A, 7, 7A, 8, and 8A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Moving into our 7 o'clock appointment with Jennifer Souza of Pepper Dining, Pepper Dining, Inc., DBA Chili's Grill &amp; Bar. The request to change the manager from Travis Lozotti to Jennifer Souza. Is Ms. Souza here this evening? Is anyone here from Chili's?
Sorry, I think that's a young woman here. She had a little motion set up.
Okay.
You can, it's the board's pleasure to go to the next one, or it is essentially an administrative vote.
Are you Ms. Souza?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Welcome. We just announced the item, so if you'd like to have a seat at the table, that would be great. And if you can just give a summary to the board as to the reason for your appearance this evening and how we can help you.
Okay, I'm looking to apply for the liquor license for the Chili's in Wilmington. I'm the new general manager over there, took over three months ago, so I'm here for that.
Can I do something?
Yes. I'm actually at football with my daughter and cheering, so I'm like running back and forth, so I apologize.
What's your password?
So at this point, I'll turn it over to the manager to give us an update.
Yes, so the request is for a change in manager from Travis Lozotti to Ms. Souza. The process requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Directors has already confirmed via correspondence that they've taken a vote to authorize the transfer. The police chief, Michael Begonis, indicates in correspondence, the Wilmington Police Department has reviewed the applicant, application presented by Pepper Dining, doing business as Chili's Grill &amp; Bar, for an application to change the manager from Travis J. Lozotti to Jennifer Souza. The police department has conducted a review of Ms. Souza and recommends approval of the application request. So the board would need to, if it so is, is so inclined, vote for this authorization to transfer manager, and then there's the ABCC Form 43 that would need to be executed.
Questions or comments from anybody on the board? Do we have a motion to grant the request?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you for being here.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving right along to our 7:05 appointment with BGP Tavern LLC, doing business as Red Heat Tavern. The request is to change the manager from Alfonso Soto to Denise Herrera. Hi, how are you? Welcome.
I am here to change the manager on the liquor license because the predecessor is no longer employed by us.
Okay.
Similar situation again. Per the ABCC requirements, this is a change in manager. The Form 43 would need to be executed if the board is so inclined to authorize this change in manager. The memorandum from the police chief reads, "The Wilmington Police Department has reviewed the application presented by BGP Tavern LLC, DBA Red Heat Tavern, for an application to change the manager from Alfonso Soto to Denise Herrera. The police department has conducted a review of Ms. Herrera and recommends approval of this application request."
Excellent. Any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we grant the request.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Anything further? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. Moving on to our next scheduled appointment with Claudian Kurasi, KQ, Inc., doing businesses Peter's Pizza Roast Beef and Seafood. The request is to obtain a common victual license for the property located at 2 Lowell Street. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Hi, my name is Claudian Kurasi, and the change of management from Mohammed for Peter's Pizza and Roast Beef in 2 Lowell Street.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to the manager at this time.
Yes, so at hand is the question of whether the board wishes to grant a common victualer's license. The recommendations from the health director, Shelley Newhouse, recommend approval of the application for common victualer's license for KQ, Inc., DBA Peter's Pizza Roast Beef and Seafood, Unit 10, 2 Lowell Street, subject to meeting all requirements of the Board of Health. The building inspector, Al Spalding, indicates after review and consideration of the Town of Wilmington bylaw and all applicable codes, I have no outstanding zoning issues with the above-mentioned business. The one item I would note is that the application requires completion of a workers' compensation insurance affidavit and the certificate of insurance, which has not been provided, so I would recommend if the board opts to grant this that it be done contingent upon providing the, completing the application, providing the certificate.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we grant the request, subject to the applicant's satisfaction of the workers' comp insurance requirements and the conditions, and satisfaction of the conditions of the Board of Health.
I'll second it, sir.
Okay, motions been made and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, moving right along to our next appointment with Adam Quinn, managing member for Jane Marie Donuts, doing businesses Dunkin' Donuts. The request is to obtain a common victual license for the property located at 206 Ballardvale Street. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you guys?
Hello.
Yeah, I'm looking for that common vix.
All right.
Common vix.
So in this instance, the business is located at 206 Ballardvale Street. Recommendations from Shelley Newhouse, health director, recommend approval of the application for common victualer's license for Jane Marie Donuts, doing businesses Dunkin' Donuts, 206 Ballardvale Street, subject to meeting all requirements of the Board of Health. Al Spalding, building inspector, after review and consideration of the Town of Wilmington bylaws and applicable codes, I have no outstanding zoning issues with the above-mentioned business.
Okay, any questions or comments or a motion from the board?
I make the motion, we grant the.
I'm sorry, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I actually put in a request to help me restrict the hours. Sometimes Dunkin' Donuts pushes to put the hours later into the night. My employees aren't always the safest the latest of the night. It's not, not good business. I was actually asking the board to restrict the hours until 11:00 PM at night. I'm not sure if that got in there or not.
That last time, too.
Yeah, I did the last time.
I'm just curious, again, I know you, yeah, funny enough, you did request that last time, and the reason for it, what is it, the safety of the employees? Because I know you're looking for the town, for this request, and what about giving the town a little something? Maybe it'd be open 24 hours where we've given you many common victual license, and you asked this before. Maybe give something to the town and maybe stay open a little later. I don't know.
Yeah, I think that 100% of the robberies I've had are past, are late at that time, and it's hard to get full-time employees out late at night. It's usually kids, and because of that, we get nervous about the safety of the employees. In addition, there's not, not a lot of sales as, as a practical business matter. It doesn't make a lot of sense. Really, I have the store in the mobile, Derek Santini's lot on the Mobile Street, that one's 24 hours. That works in that application because it's a gas station, but usually tends to be nothing but trouble.
Yeah, I apologize. I did, I should note that that was a request to restrict the hours to 11 o'clock.
Is this location, if I'm sorry, if I may, is this location up near where the new target is going to be, in that, in that vicinity, so you'll be associated with that, that business that's still?
Which would then be consistent with the hours of the target, so.
That's right. They took the target on, hours posted on the nearest targets in the area and lined it up with that.
Yep.
Okay, so based on that comment, would anyone like to make a motion with those hours indicated in mind?
I'll make the motion that we grant the common vix with, with those hours restrictions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Moving on to the 7:20 appointment, which is for the Board of Selectmen to have a discussion regarding the Wilmington Arena Authority. I'd like to just start with this subject matter by prefacing it with a few comments. The last Board of Selectmen meeting that took place, a member of the Board, Selectmen Newhouse, had made a request. I unfortunately was not in attendance at that meeting, but had requested that through the chair that they would be an agenda item at a future Selectmen meeting to discuss the Wilmington Arena Authority. And so this evening, we do have it on the agenda. And in speaking with the town manager, Jeffrey Hall, I'd kindly asked for us to work together with a memo invitation to go out to Kenneth Del Rossi, who is the president of the Investment and Youth Foundation, Inc., which is the entity that was previously known or has connections to the Wilmington Arena Authority. And just to summarize, the letter that was sent out by Mr. Hall is that, for some time now, the town has been aware that the Wilmington Arena Authority no longer exists as it was originally constituted. It has been my understanding that the Wilmington Arena Authority was created in the mid-1980s as a non-profitable charitable organization for the purpose of providing Wilmington youth and adults with the opportunity to skate at the Eleanor M. Ristoucha Memorial Arena. For a period of time after the authority was established, it was party to a license with Bernard Ristoucha Jr. for the use of the Ristoucha Arena for public skating and ice hockey games. Several years ago, it appears the Wilmington Arena Authority was reconstituted and is now known as the Investment and Youth Foundation, Inc. The Wilmington Board of Selectmen would appreciate the opportunity to learn more about your organization and its evolution from the Wilmington Arena Authority, Inc. to its current status. The next board meeting is scheduled for the evening of Monday, August 18, 2014, at 7:00 PM at Wilmington Town Hall. Please contact me as to whether you or any of your representatives, your organization, are able to attend the board's meeting that evening to discuss the transition of your organization. And then Mr. Hall goes on to provide his contact information and signs it sincerely. And it's my understanding that there hasn't been any response. Is there anyone here from the Investment and Youth Foundation that's present this evening? Okay, hearing no one, and still is your understanding there's been a response?
I have not received any contact at all with anyone affiliated with the group.
Okay. So that being said, I think at this time, what I'd like to do is open it up to the board. It's on here as an agenda item, and we're going to carry on this discussion anyway. In light of the fact that Selectmen Newhouse, you brought this up, I'd like to defer to you at this time, if you'd like to start this discussion, since you're the one who brought it forward to the board.
Sure. I, I'm sure, like other members of the board, over the course of some period of time, have heard a number of residents concerned about the availability of ice time and the accessibility to that resource, that skating rink. So I, I had gone back and pulled together some, some paperwork that I'd like to share with the general public, and I know the board is, is aware of this history, but I think it gets to the crux of what, what my questions are and the information that I'm hoping we can just get answers to. Back in May of 1984, the town called a special town meeting, and on the warrant was an article to rezone the property at which the, the rink ultimately was constructed. The petitioner at that time was Mr. Al Reedy, a Wilmington resident, and clearly the, the commitment to the town was that the rezoning, which would enable the, the construction of a skating rink, was being done for the primary benefit of Wilmington residents. And to his credit, Mr. Ristoucha, Ben Ristoucha at the time, committed to making a sizable contribution of money and resources and to, and to essentially fund the construction of the skating rink for that purpose. And, you know, the, the minutes from the special town meeting in May in 1984 couldn't be any more clear that the purpose for rezoning the property was so that Wilmington residents would continue to enjoy that, that resource and that facility. Chronologically, after the town voted to, to, in fact, rezone the property, the Wilmington Arena Authority, Inc. was created, and the articles of organization were filed with the Secretary of State's office just days later, in May of 1984. Again, that the, one of the incorporators on that was Mr. Reedy, and the, you know, the paperwork essentially enables the, the entity to exist, the corporate entity to exist. Around that time, the folks who constituted the Wilmington Arena Authority were representatives from various interest groups in Wilmington, and specifically, they were representatives from Wilmington Youth Hockey, from Wilmington Skating Club, from the Wilmington Recreation Department, Wilmington Law Enforcement.
At-Large.
There was an At-Large. I just rattled off the various groups, and I'm, I'm missing one. Which one did I miss? In high school athletic department, okay? So, and then there was one At-Large member. So that particular group that was the, the original members, that constituted the original members of the Board of Directors, passed bylaws that said that they had to meet those qualifications in order to sit on the Board of Directors for this nonprofit. The nonprofit, in terms of the paperwork that was filed to get that status, couldn't be more clear, and I'll, I'll just read very briefly. The Wilmington Arena Authority is a nonprofit organization established to construct and manage a skating and recreation facility for the citizens of Wilmington. This facility will provide Wilmington High School Hockey Team, the Wilmington Figure Skating Club, Wilmington Youth Hockey Association, the Wilmington Recreation Department, an opportunity to participate and to compete. So, I mean, the, the mission was very clear, the rezoning was very clear, the qualifications in order to be able to serve on that nonprofit organization, they were very clear. And frankly, you know, it appears to me in reviewing the history here, Mr. Ristoucha did what he said he was going to do. He, he furnished the, the real estate, he wrote a check in the amount of $500,000 to fund this nonprofit, and, and, you know, supposedly away we go. As, as a town, we're going to have that resource. The records that are available at this point in time from the Secretary of State's office and from the Attorney General's Office Public Charities Division only go back so far. They go back to circa 2000. So in reviewing those records, they have attached at various points copies of the bylaws of the organization. And quite simply, you know, at its inception in 1985, the organization required that in order to serve on the Board of Directors, you had to be a representative of those various interest groups. The next set of bylaws that are available are dated 1993. Sometime between 85 and 93, the organization stopped doing business that way, stopped requiring those qualifications, at least to the extent that Recreation Commission, High School Athletic Department, and Wilmington Law Enforcement were concerned. You fast forward to 2000, and you can find, as a matter of public record, bylaws that reflect that the Wilmington Youth Hockey and the Wilmington Skating Club, that those qualifications had also been eliminated as of some point prior to 2000. So, you know, there's a lot of concerns and frustration at the inaccessibility and the lack of priority that Wilmington groups have been given over there, and I have a number of concerns about how the whole process has unfolded. But really, just to put it simply, I would like to know from this organization, I'd like to see their, the minutes of their meetings and their certificates of vote, which reflect that the bylaws were changed to eliminate those qualifications by people who met the qualifications. If not, I don't see how they could, how they could continue to do business as a nonprofit without satisfying those, those qualifications. So maybe they exist, maybe they don't, but I think it's, it's incumbent on the nonprofit just to show us, show us the records. See where those qualifications that were implemented to ensure that Wilmington residents, and particularly Wilmington kids, would not only play first fiddle, but, you know, would at least be in the orchestra. I mean, at this point, you know, first fiddle, second fiddle, I mean, let's at least make sure that they have a seat. So, and, and I have, you know, other concerns and other comments, and I'd like to follow through on them, but I certainly don't want to, you know, dominate the, the discussion here. I mean, I certainly want to hear from other Selectmen and, you know, hear from other folks, but, but there's, there's a number of things that I think we ought to be doing in representing the kids of this town in particular, that, just a very direct request from the organization for documents. That's all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the members of the board. You know, obviously, it's your choice if you'd like to make a comment. Would anyone like to? Yes?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I totally agree with Selectmen Newhouse. Obviously, he did his homework, but sometimes longevity means something. Mr. Newhouse has been around. Before elected to the Board of Selectmen in 1987, I served on the Wilmington Planning Board during this time, and I remember back then specifically with Mr. Ristoucha, Benny, the father, what they did was they brought Mr. Announcer himself, Kurt Gowdy, to the groundbreaking, and it was very exciting that the Town of Wilmington was actually going to get something out of it, and he brought Kurt Gowdy, and it was like everybody was in awe of this. And unfortunately, I mean, you know, I don't have to open up an old wound, but if you take a look at the history, what's going on, I thought at that time, serving on the Planning Board, actually bending over backwards for these folks, to help these folks because the Town of Wilmington was going to get something out of it. So you learn a lot from history, and, you know, without saying too much, I think you have your answer. That's all I'll say, and I know we're limited to what we can say. Thanks.
Briefly, if I may, I, I want to say to Mr. Newhouse, I'm grateful to you for putting this on the discussion radar screen for us. I'm embarrassed to say that I wasn't aware, really, of the agreements that had been established back in the mid-'80s, and so when I came to town in the late '90s, it was already kind of what we see today, and I just sort of took that out on face value as that must be the way it is. I kind of perceived that maybe the Bruins being there elevated it to beyond the reach of the local sports, the youth sports teams, but through the research that, that you've compiled here and presented to us, it seems very clear that that really had nothing to do with it. Seems clear to me, anyway, or I'm getting that the Bruins have no impact or had no impact as to whether or not the Wilmington kids had access to practice or play their games in Ristoucha Arena. I'm frustrated because the documents don't clearly illustrate to us when, or how, or why the makeup of that authority changed, and in fact, changed names, but it seems very clear to me, anyway, that the spirit of what that organization was supposed to be doing, based on the vote that was taken at the town meeting in 85, was it? Was it the?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, okay. I mean, town meeting voters went, and the spirit of that vote was based on the fact that that arena was going to be built for, specifically for first use by Wilmington youth, and for all intents and purposes, through the years, Wilmington youth are cheated of that opportunity. So I really want to keep this hot. Again, we could all dig in and start really, I don't know, throwing things out there, but I think it's more important that we have a dialogue, if we can, if we can find a way to get them to the table and have a dialogue with representatives from the Investment and Youth Foundation, and understand and maybe see the documents that led them to where they are. Hopefully, we can get to a point where we can re-articulate the town's position based on the vote of 1984 and on what I believe is still the position of the town, that the town ought to have the opportunity to use that facility because that's why it's there, and that's what Mr. Ristoucha intended from the beginning, and that's what the town intended. So thank you for bringing it up. I hope it, it stays on our radar screen going forward and that we can come to some resolution.
Well, if, if I may, Madam Chair, I, I, I don't disagree with anything that Mr. Shampoo just said, but if, frankly, if representatives from that organization aren't interested in coming here and talking to us, there are ways that we simply request that information. I mean, the, when a nonprofit files its returns with the, their returns and their various schedules that go along with that, with the AG's office every year, there are boxes with, that they check off, that say that they make this information available upon request from the public. It's, it's, and they indicate right in their returns, in their filings, that they're willing to do that. So, so I, one of the things I think we need to be doing is reaching out by way of written correspondence and just making a demand for the, the documents that we're talking about. And I think there's other things that we need to take a look at, you know, what the conflict of interest policy is. You know, they indicate in their returns that they have a written policy, that they refer to it regularly at meetings. Well, we have a right to see that in public. When, when an organization avails itself of the, of the different laws that affect them as a nonprofit, that's one of the things that they agree to do. When we send a, you know, somebody from the general public has a question about the conflict of interest policies, they provide it. So, you know, those are a couple of things, and I, and I have some examples in here as well that, you know, again, I'm happy to, to go through, but in, in furtherance of what Mr. Shampoo is suggesting, which I think is, he's on the money, I think we don't have to wait to, you know, bend over backwards to try and engage these people. Let's, let's send a written request. And, you know, I know that the invitation was sent to the person that, you know, by all accounts is the person that maintains the records, but, you know, send it to the various directors who reside in Wilmington, send a request to them. They're directors, they can get their hands on corporate paperwork anytime they tell the custodian they want them. So I think we just have to reach out to these folks and, and do it in a very transparent and public way.
If I, I'd like to just read something, just so maybe the public will understand the impact here. In one of the documents, this would be a Form 1023, it's the application for recognition of exemption to become a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. This is dated 1985, and it was submitted by the Wilmington Arena Authority to the state of Massachusetts, and Section 8 asks, "What benefits, services, or products will the organization provide that are related to its exempt function?" And the answer written in is, "Provide a skating facility for the citizens of Wilmington." I don't think that that is being lived up to.
Anyone else?
I'll just make a quick comment, and I'll turn it over to you, Jeff, if you want to make any comments, and if anyone in the audience does as well. I think all the comments are well-placed, and I certainly would support that as a board member. You know, from what I'm hearing is, is, you know, take the names and the people out of it, you know, obviously want to give proper respect to the Ristoucha family for, you know, setting up the arena and, and going, as you have said, you know, the right way about doing it. From what I'm hearing, we simply just want to know from a procedural standpoint, the evolution of how things came to be the way they are today. There shouldn't be any reason, in my opinion, why anybody wouldn't be very forthcoming with providing that information, assuming all those records are there, and, you know, I don't want to get into the minutia details, but it's, it's clear through these tax returns that there are people that are employed in managerial statuses with compensations that, quite frankly, I wouldn't mind making myself, you know, even during some of the years that are listed. So, you know, there, there are people that are putting in 50-plus hours, 40 hours, 40 hours, 40 hours. This information has to be available. So to your point, I think that there should be a written request to them, and quite frankly, see, see everybody that's on this current, you know, establishment now, and have them all be in the know that this information is being requested. So there'll be no miscommunication as to who's in receipt of the letter, people are on vacation, are not available, just, I would, I would mail a letter to all of them and ask for the information. So there's no, no question that everybody that's a part of this organization has been notified, that we are seeking to understand. notified, that we are seeking to understand the status of the organization and the history. And go from there.
Good point, Mrs. Chairman. I think sending a letter to all of them, the hours that they work, I think it would be no problem for them to get the information that we're looking for. And just to go back to the, the original meaning of this nonprofit and what they wanted, it's been kind of the joke over the years, I've been involved with some other sports, youth sports in Wilmington, and it was kind of the joke that the kids would have to leave one sport to go to another, to go to another town to get some ice time, and then come back out here and finish their football game or to make a football game. So, I think there's been going on, as Sluckman Shampoo would point out, quite a while, and it's, I think it's time to look into this. And what you just said about getting all of them a letter and reaching out, transparency is good, what we should do.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any comments that you want to make, Jeff, at all?
I would just comment that, that I have had a conversation with Bernie Restuccia, who has indicated that, while he's aware of some of the concerns that have been expressed about the ice time, essentially, he's indicated that, you know, his role has not been to dictate who uses the rink, that the Wilmington Arena Authority initially, and more recently, Rotundo Inc., which is the current outfit that runs the rink, that it's, you know, he has a lease with them and that it's really their call, but he has indicated to me that he is, he does understand the concern and, you know, my impression is, feels some, understands where people in Wilmington are coming from, that there, that there's this rink in Wilmington that, that his father had essentially made possible in memory of Mr. Bernie Restuccia's mother and is, I think he is disheartened by the idea that it isn't, that Wilmington residents don't have the access that they should to it. The other comment I would make is that, that I've, I've heard it suggested that there were certain individuals on the board of the Arena Authority that at a point in time had suggested that it, that the Arena Authority, or that the lease with Mr. Restuccia, Bernie Restuccia, should be modified to allow other groups outside of Wilmington to have access to the ice just for sustainability of the operation. And there seems to be some, some suggestion that that was really the cause for these problems. In my estimation, there are a number of rinks in the area, whether you're talking Bill Ricker or Stonem or Redding, that provide ice time to residents outside of their respective communities. That isn't the issue. The issue is providing a greater prime time, so to speak, or a greater measure of ice time to the local youth groups and local kids. And I think that's what's missing in this case. It's not, you know, it's not about whether the Wilmington Arena Authority only provides ice time to people who live in Wilmington. It's, it's about the opportunity for Wilmington kids and skaters and so on to have ice time in Wilmington. And for whatever reason, that has been largely removed.
And if I, if I may, Madam Chair, to reinforce the point that the manager just made, and that I think had been touched on previously, in May of nineteen eighty-six, the Restuccia family as the property owners entered into a fifteen-year lease with the Wilmington Arena Authority for a hundred dollars a year. So, you know, the, the issue here isn't whether or not what had been represented to the town was implemented and coming out of the gates. It was. It's, you know, there was follow-through from the property owner, and there was follow-through from the folks who created the nonprofit. And that lease was subsequently extended at different times. And I know that in two thousand and five, Mr. Reedy, sometime prior to that, had been diagnosed with a, with a very serious illness, and in fact, he passed away around that time. And, you know, that the, there's been some indication, if you believe what you read, that the reason why this for-profit entity became the operator of the facility and the tenant was purely based upon that, the fact that Mr. Reedy was sick. That may, that may have been the case, but the reality is, to the manager's point, that the horse was already out of the barn, that the Wilmington groups, who were supposed to be the intended beneficiaries, they lost that nonprofit sometime between eighty-five and ninety-three. You know, two thousand and five was irrelevant. I mean, in fact, the nonprofit at that point in time in two thousand and five negotiated the termination of the lease with the owner to make way for the for-profit entity, Rotundo Enterprises, to come in and be the new operator of the rink. This idea that somehow, you know, that the nonprofit could have, you know, had a hundred-year lease or something and didn't, is irrelevant. They, they had the lease. The nonprofit gave up the lease, and they did it, I would think, because the, the folks who were supposed to have a vested interest lost their stake in that nonprofit. And that's what it all boils down to. Any discussion about what happens after nineteen ninety-three, in my mind, is a, is a, you know, it's a red herring. It's just trying to distract attention from the fact that sometime between nineteen eighty-five and the inception of that nonprofit, that was created to benefit first and foremost the kids of Wilmington, the bylaws were changed, or they weren't changed, but the way that they did business changed. And, and if well-intended volunteers abdicated their seats and their authority, you know, by way of a vote that in hindsight wasn't, you know, wasn't a wise choice, so be it. You know, well, I guess, you know, life goes on and you live with that. But I'm not going to believe it went down that way until I see the paperwork. And, and if you've, if you're making, you know, wide-sweeping changes, like the qualifications of the people who are on that board, to serve on that board, I just refuse to believe if it was done the way it's supposed to be done, that that paperwork's not readily available. Just, just show us the votes. Show us the minutes.
And if hypothetically they can, if those documents exist and, and we become possession of those documents, what's next? In other words, what I'm trying to get to is, can we ever get back to what it was intended to be? Or has that horse already left the barn, so to speak?
Well, I mean, at this point, the nonprofit no longer operates the rink.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I suppose it affects the, you know, what happens to the corpus of the money. I mean, I've, I've read that it's the intention of the nonprofit to wind down this business, this, this organization over the course of the next few years. Well, why would we be paying, when I say "we," I'm talking about anybody who has an interest in the mission of that nonprofit. Why would one want to continue to pay salaries to wind something down when you could just go to the SJC of Massachusetts and ask to disburse the monies? I don't understand. If the only purpose for creating the, of maintaining the nonprofit is to wind down the, its mission, then, then just wind it down. Petition the, petition the courts and close it out. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that just doesn't make sense. I mean, the, the nonprofit was the tenant and the operator of the rink from when it was completed in circa nineteen eighty-six, right through two thousand and five, right? And the quote-unquote "general manager" of that, of that nonprofit, which was operating a skating rink, by all of the paperwork that they have filed, this isn't, I'm just looking at what they've filed since two thousand, and, and I've got most of the records going back as early as nineteen ninety-three. It's always fifty-plus hours to the tune of, you know, in nineteen ninety-three, the compensation for that general manager was sixty-seven thousand dollars and some change. And by nineteen ninety-seven, the compensation was seventy-two thousand. By the year two thousand, seventy-seven thousand. By two thousand and two, two thousand and four, it gets up to eighty-six thousand dollars. That's probably a, a great year to point out. In two thousand and four, the year before, there's a deal broken to get the for-profit entity in as a tenant. The general manager of the nonprofit got paid eighty-six thousand dollars. Her son was a legal assistant who got twenty-four thousand five hundred for thirty hours a week. And then in two thousand and five, when they made the transition, those numbers were about the same, and, and another son made eighteen thousand dollars. I mean, what, you know, the, the business of operating the rink isn't even in play anymore. But yet, as recently as two thousand and ten, we've got the general manager still making seventy-six thousand dollars a year, and, and family members' assistants for three hours a week mating, making eighty-five hundred bucks and some change. I mean, I just don't understand, you can't have it both ways. You can't say that, you know, that the general manager has this responsibility of operating the rink, and I understand that, that you need people to operate a facility like that. It costs money, I get that. But then to say that we needed to bring in a for-profit to become the operator of that facility, yet that nonprofit, their costs of doing business haven't gone down. And the cost of doing business is, for the purpose, if you believe what you read, to wind down the mission of the nonprofit. I don't know. You look at two thousand and, the two thousand and twelve return, Plymouth Youth Hockey gets an eight-thousand-dollar grant. What's Plymouth Youth Hockey getting an eight-thousand-dollar grant in two thousand and twelve? I mean, I understand the general manager lives in Plymouth. I can, I can draw an inference, I can make an assumption. I wish people were here where I could ask the question. Maybe there's a reason for it. But I, I mean, anybody who reads this stuff would say, you know, what are you talking about? These, you know, all the returns for the nonprofits talk about, you know, they ask the question, are there any relationships with recipients of grants? And the, and the answer is consistently no. Well, maybe that's the case, but I'm seeing private high schools that are getting all these grants from this nonprofit. I mean, is not some connection someplace? You know? So, I just, I mean, the, the whole history of what's in black and white, if, if anybody just reads the returns from, you know, two thousand to two thousand and twelve, they're all available online, they're a matter of public record. I mean, you have one, you have one relative of the general manager who's paid, just to give you an idea of how the heck these numbers play out here. In two thousand and eight, in two thousand and six, the general manager's son got paid a little over eighty-five hundred bucks. And the returns say that that was for twenty-four hours a week work. You fast-forward to two thousand and eight, the same person's still getting eighty-five hundred bucks and some change, but now it's three hours of work. So, how does, how's a family member make the same amount of money, working supposedly twenty-four hours a week one year, and then three hours a week two years from now, and makes that same amount every year since? Just in the public record. I didn't, I didn't come up with it. So, I mean, it's just, it's, it's insult to injury when you, when you look at the history of how this unfolded, and then you just look at public records and you say to yourself, what's, that doesn't make any sense. What's the legitimate reason why that happens? And, and I wish folks were here because maybe there's an answer, maybe there's an explanation. I, I don't know. But, but based on all of that, I, you know, my, my take on it is that we ought to be sending a letter to the nonprofit, as, as the chair suggested, copy every member of the Board of Directors, indicate that we would like to get, in accordance with their representative, representations in their filings to the AG's office, that they make this information available upon request. And we are requesting the corporate records that reflect the change in the qualifications for the Board of Directors, when those votes were taken, who took them, and if they could provide the minutes of those meetings. That would be appreciated. If they could provide a copy of their conflict of interest policy, which apparently is available upon request, we'd appreciate having a copy of their conflict of interest policy and when it was adopted, and, you know, minutes from any, any meetings at which it may have been revised. I, I don't think that's an unreasonable request, and I, I would think it's fifteen minutes worth of work to pull them out of a file, copy them, and send them over.
I just want to say to Mike Newhouse, I think that's just a little fuzzy math, that's all, you know, with those folks.
Anything further from anyone on the board? I see that there's a number of people in the audience, so I'm actually going to go to the audience in this instance and ask if anyone has any questions or comments to make.
I actually have a question, just a question.
If you can just state your name.
George Lienfeldt, Eleven Conker Street. I agree with pretty much everything that you're talking about now, that there seems to be something strange going on here. But in my mind, a big piece of the puzzle is missing in my mind. Why is the discussion happening now and not nineteen ninety-three, or two thousand and five, or nineteen ninety-eight? Did something precipitate the discussion and discovery of this? I think that's a big piece that I'd like to know something about.
I certainly can speak to why I brought it up, a couple of different things. One was I had been contacted by a, a member of the press fairly recently asking me if I thought that the, that the Bruins' announcement that they wouldn't be practicing at that facility for more than a couple more years would really have a big impact on the town. And my response to that person was, from an economic standpoint, I really don't think so. But the, the timing of your request and of that announcement is ironic because I, I think that, that over the years, the kids in Wilmington and Wilmington programs haven't been afforded the kinds of access to that facility that was intended. And that is in the wake of, over the course of the past year, a number of Wilmington residents raising it to me. And quite frankly, I'm a hockey person, you know, I'm a person that's into hockey and youth hockey in particular, and so folks have come to me and complained about it. And quite frankly, in, in the last couple of years, just in terms of the cost of the ice time, which, you know, if, if it's a private enterprise, you know, market, market, you know, demands will dictate what they can charge, and that's, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. It's really not about the cost, but when folks talk about the cost of the ice, but the relative availability as compared to other programs that include a number of kids from outside of Wilmington, that's where people get frustrated. So, so I've heard from folks who walk into the rink with a, you know, a six- or a seven-year-old child, and, you know, they're walking into the rink to get on the ice at seven-thirty on a school night, you know, to eventually be home at nine o'clock at night. And there are, you know, eight, nine, ten, eleven-year-olds from another program that has nothing to do with the Wilmington community necessarily, getting off the ice at, at six-thirty. That frustrates people. Now, you know, scheduling can be a complicated thing, I get that, but in answer to your question, a number of folks have been increasingly frustrated at the access or relative lack of access that they get at that facility and have come to me about it.
Okay, I take that as something to answer, just like I say, I think other people may have had the same question as to why now rather than before, but thank you.
Just to add to that, you know, Mr. Newhouse isn't the only person on the board that's received complaints. I've received several as well. So, I can't speak for the other members of the board, but I, I can speak to at least a handful of families, at least on both hands, actually, that have had to go out and they're paying exponentially higher rates to play for private teams because they get quality ice time. So, if they can't work into the model that Wilmington has to subscribe to, they'd love to be a Wilmington Wildcat, but... to be a Wilmington Wildcat, but it just doesn't work. It's counterproductive, and it's prohibitive sometimes for families, so they have to take it on the road and go to outside teams, and it becomes a problem. So I can only speak to what I'm hearing, and I'm sure everyone else has their own unique stories, but I think the point's been made.
Many stories.
Anyone else? Yes.
Yeah. Dick Hayden, on the Finance Committee, and involved in youth hockey going back before this rink was ever built. And I've got 15 grandchildren, six kids, so I've got plenty of people on the rink. Going back, they asked me to be on the board initially on that, on the rink. I turned it down. I didn't want to get involved with the people that were funding the board and so forth. I wanted to look at it from the outside. And when it first started off, it was all right. These were mostly Wilmington teams in there. And you could see it over the years. You know, the Wilmington teams were getting squeezed out, they weren't getting a good ice time. Other towns would come in, next thing you know, you saw independent teams. You go down there and you'll see, oh, the Israeli Shamrocks or something, you know, different teams from other places. They had nothing to do with even, even the hockey up in this league up here. So I, I think something should definitely be done. It's ridiculous that we have a, we have a strong skating and hockey program in the town of Wilmington. We should have an opportunity to get the same kind of benefits from that rink as the other towns get from their rinks. Every town that has a rink, Bill Ricker, the Bill Ricker kids get their first shot, you know? We should be in that mode. So I just wanted to pass it on.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi. John Foley Jr., for those who may, may not know me. I want to, first of all, thank Mike and the board for looking into this. For matter of record, I was the Wilmington Youth Hockey president during the time of the transition. So a pretty difficult time. Be clear, I was not on the board of the Wilmington Arena Authority. But my understanding of the Wilmington Arena Authority was for the youth of the community. I think that was almost the tagline. And at the time, when it came to the forefront that this was going to happen, it was going to move to a for-profit, you know, I didn't sit there and not ask the question of the people that ran the Wilmington Arena Authority at the time. And I said, my understanding from the business perspective is, if you're going to do this, you should dissolve your nonprofit and then start whatever you want. Because in my mind, they, I'm going to say this, in all those years, no matter who was involved, there was money that was put into the bank based on that nonprofit. All right? So money was put into the bank. I don't know how much, and we can always throw around numbers, and that's really not the right thing to do, but there was a substantial amount of money that was then taken from this nonprofit and moved over to whatever the, the name of the fund is now, to give out scholarships, whether that's, you know, whatever they were. I asked the question, why didn't you ask Wilmington Youth Hockey if we wanted to run the rink? What would you know about running a rink? I said I didn't ask that question. What, what's important to know here is, when you're in the role, and the reason why, you know, is it George?
Yes.
Why some folks might not come forward at this time, your job in that program is to put children on the ice. And if you have no options, you have to deal with what you're given. And when that price went from a nonprofit price to get kids on the ice at a, whatever those numbers were, between $150 and $190 an hour, and then overnight, well, I'm sorry, the following year, you had to sign a contract, you know, 40, 50, 60% higher, it's not easy for people to put their kids on the ice anymore. It's not a soccer field, you know? And what I learned at the time was, not everybody's totally enthused of the game of ice hockey. So I've learned a lot about, you know, how we as volunteers, when you want to bring something forward. However, I won't speak, you know, if you do, you don't know, I had two children that went through the entire program here, they skated outside, and then they played on your, your high school hockey team, right? And we had some successful years. Well, and the reason you didn't see me down here earlier is because I didn't want to be kept out of the rink because you say anything. Well, that's not the case now. And if you just think about our kids, and I'm not going to speak for Ed or the school, but why are we playing a home game over in stone? Why are we playing, why are the kids have to go practice for their next, they're driving for their third championship, and they have to go somewhere else to get their practice ice? There's nothing down at that rink that is benefiting the youth of this community. So if that's what it was started, and I'm appreciative of the restuches, and, you know, where they all came from back, you know, Wilmington forward, and they gave back, I mean, there's nothing better than giving back. But when you give back, and then someone takes that give back, it, it isn't right. And I, I'm glad, you know, it's been, you know, 10 years for me, and when I read the article and paper, I can't wait to go down there. But you have to understand, the reason you're not going to see people barging in here, because, I believe, they're afraid if they say anything, then they'll be penalized, you know? Whoever's running the program, I knew, I knew who it is, what she does, they're holds, you know, ties you up. What do you say? Oh, I'm not going to sign that contract? And there's been rumors, all right, so rumors, that they want four-year contracts now. Well, I mean, you can't expect a youth program to sign a four-year contract. Now, you have to validate that, because, you know, stories on top of stories on top of stories. But that's pretty firsthand for me, four-year contract for a youth program. That's just, that's unreasonable. I mean, if it was reasonable, it'd be one thing. I know everybody has to make some money. All I know is, we had someone that ran the nonprofit, who now has a job as the general manager making money, and from what I understand, makes money from the nonprofit they set up. It just, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. And I just want to say thank you very much for you guys taking a look at it.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay. So just in summation, you'll draft a letter on behalf of the board. Thank you. Okay, moving on to communications.
Communications provided the board with a copy of the request for proposal on the Whitfield School. This is seeking offers to purchase some or all of the building or various elements of it. The deadline for submissions is September 22 at 10:00 a.m. It's being posted in the Central Register, which is the Secretary of the Commonwealth's publication vehicle for procurement. It's going to be in there on the 20th of August, and then in the town crier on the 28th of August, and the 9th, and the 4th of September. Also, as part of the process, for interested proponents, there will be a time for tours on September 3 at 10:00, or otherwise by appointment through contacting George Hooper. I would just like to acknowledge Kendra Amorall, the Assistant Manager, for putting together the request for proposal, and she worked with Kathleen Reynolds, the Chair of the Historical Commission, and Terry McDermott, and received their input as well. We have correspondence from Richard and Ann Spur. They are looking for transportation, bus transportation, either through the LRTA or the MBTA, to provide services to them and members of their family. They described some conversations that, that I had with Mrs. Spur about the options there. I responded, and the next piece of correspondence is my response to her. And as part of that response, I included information about the ride, which is funded through the MBTA, but it provides specific transit service for individuals, depending upon their circumstances, who may need transportation to various locations. So hopefully that, that will accommodate them. Essentially, the, just to be clear, in terms of the LRTA, I did speak with the general manager there. The service that they provide right now, which comes down from Tewksbury on 38 stops at the train station on Main Street, that was done apparently at the request of some of their ridership, I think in large part from the Tewksbury area. The representative I spoke with indicated that their area of service does not really include Wilmington. It's essentially Bill Ricker, Lowell, Chelmsford, Drake, at Tewksbury. Where our, Wilmington is really serviced by the MBTA. And for them to extend their bus lines any further into Wilmington, aside from not being a service provider to Wilmington, would add costs that their members, member communities would have to pay. So that option is really not available to us. In the MBTA, they would have to do studies to determine if there's ridership that would merit additional transit, so. Next, under correspondence, we have a letter from Robert Peterson. He is, represents Kathleen Campbell. This is concerning a property at 26, 26 St. Paul Street. And this is information he's looking to, on her behalf, have the restriction removed on property that was purchased by the Campbells back in 1992. There was a town meeting vote in 1999 that authorized the removal of that restriction. And so he's communicating his intentions to the board. This will be further discussed under Board to Consider. We have correspondence from the MBTA Advisory Board. There are four seats on the Metropolitan Planning Organization that are coming up, and the correspondence outlines the election process. Essentially, there will be elections held at the MAPC's Fall Conference Meeting on October 29th. Location and time to be decided. In order to qualify to be on the ballot, each chief elected official who wishes to be a candidate must secure the signatures of chief elected officials in the region, including their own. Chief elected officials may only sign nomination papers for one municipality per subregion for the two open subregion seats, and one each for the open town and city seats. Nominations are due to the MAPC by 5:00 p.m. on Friday, October 3. Must be filed in person or by mail.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I don't mean to interrupt, but going back to item 7, are we supposed to consider signing the release this evening relative to St. Paul? We didn't take that vote.
Yes, that'll be under Board to Consider, so following the correspondence. We have correspondence from the Cardinals' office, and I'll just read this. This is directed to the Board of Selectmen. Gives me great pleasure to invite you to join me on September 21 for a special Mass and Thanksgiving to God for all men and women who serve our communities as public safety personnel. The Mass will take place at 11:30 a.m. on Sunday, September 21, 2014, at the Cathedral of the Holy Cross in Boston. Invitations have been sent to hundreds of agencies throughout the Archdiocese of Boston, which comprise 144 cities and towns in eastern Massachusetts, and we encourage all public safety personnel and their families, regardless of their faith, to be part of the special Mass. Is important to show these men and women, as well as their families, that we support them and pray for them. They are our heroes and heroines, and we wish to pay tribute to them and ask for God's blessing upon them. During the Mass, we will also wish to remember those who have died in the line of duty and honor their families. Your presence at this Mass will be in honor of those who have made the ultimate sacrifice for our safety and security. In order to plan accordingly, we kindly ask to, you to respond RSVP card no later than Friday, February, I'm sorry, September 5. I can take a Board to Consider at this point, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay, so under Board to Consider, we have asking the board to authorize the signature of Form 43, which is relative to the change in offices and directors. This is at the 99. This was discussed previously, and this is just the sign-off on the form that the ABCC requires. If you recall, there was a change in manager there.
Okay. At this time, do we have any questions, comments, or a motion from the board?
Remove the board sign. The ABCC Form 43 is aligned by the manager.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to Board to Consider, the signing of a release of restriction for 26 St. Paul Street.
So moved.
Okay.
I'd second it.
Any questions or comments?
As described on the town manager's recommendation, I support it.
Okay. All those in favor? Moving on to Board to Consider, approving the sale of town-owned land located on Marion Street. Map 4, parcel 10, as voted at the annual town meeting of May 3, 2014.
Yes, if you recall, this property came up at the last town meeting. The assessed price, or the lowest bid price for the property, is $25,600. Carol Hamilton, the Director of Planning and Conservation, is responsible for preparation of the RFP, which would go out, it would be publicized through the town crier, and interested individuals could submit a proposal to purchase the property. She is seeking the authorization of the board to go forward with that.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll move that we authorize the sale of town-owned land, map 4, parcel 10, as described.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Next item is Board to Consider, signing the deed for the sale of town-owned land located on Warren Street, map 80, parcel 42B, pursuant to, to an affirmative vote on Article 33 of the 2013 Annual Town Meeting.
For motion, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I'll make that motion as you just described, the, the article.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Next, moving on to Board to Consider, signing the warrant for the state primary to be held on Tuesday, September 9, 2014.
What happens if we don't sign? Move that the board sign the warrant. Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Public comments? Yes?
Public comment, if I could. I don't really ask any action from the board. I've already brought the issue up with the town manager. But in late June, early July, I got a notice from Reading Light that effectively my electric rate was going up about 18%. Reading Light apparently wants to attach my 40-gallon hot water heater to the Internet, and I, out of moral objections to the taxes and fees associated with broadband, Internet, and cable, I don't participate in broadband and cable through my home, and therefore I could not comply with Reading Light's, what I consider to be a demand, not, not a request, but a demand, that I attach my hot water heater to the Internet. I think that's actually kind of overly intrusive. And I plan to file some kind of a complaint, and I'm going to pursue other complaints, perhaps the Attorney General, but the Public Utilities Department, that I don't think, I think it's discriminatory in that Reading Light is requiring me to provide them with an Ethernet port to Internet. And I would imagine there's probably some older folks in town that also don't have broadband at their house. Most young people probably do. We probably would. My son is not happy that we don't. But I just had an objection to the fees that the government levies and all those things. I just object to that. I had nothing to do, other than bow at my feet and not, not participate. But I wanted to bring it to the board's attention and make a statement. Maybe some other folks can hear that out there, and maybe also, if not just my voice is crying by itself, other people are also impacted by what I consider to be kind of an extortion, unjust action on the town, you know, citizens of the town by Reading Light. I gave the town manager a couple of copies of some correspondence I received. He did talk to the executive director. They did respond to him, and the information that they responded to the town manager, I thought, was different than what they had provided to me. I had already sent them a letter, I had called them, and they refused to answer my questions and provide me any information. They were much more responsive to the town manager, but I'd just make a comment, which I just did. to the Town Manager. But I'd just make a comment, which I just did, that it may be an issue for other people in town, too. I think that not hooking up a 40-gallon hot water heater, and then, which I probably wouldn't do anyway, even if I had the Internet, but I think an 18 percent increase in my electric rate because I'm not allowing them to come in and attach my hot water heater to the Internet, I think that's absolutely outrageous. And I just wanted to lay it out there as a comment, that I hope other people object to it as well, particularly some older folks that may not even have noticed that their rates might have jumped 15 or 18 percent in July. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just comment? I did receive email communication from Mr. Lingenfelter. Forwarded the communication to Representatives at RMLD, and actually, this afternoon, did have a conversation with the customer service representative at RMLD. The situation that she described is that the mechanism that they use to shut the water heaters off during on-peak times, right now, the system that you have is a antiquated system. It was, she didn't indicate how long it's been in place, but essentially, the process, the system is antiquated so that when the power goes out, if your hot water heater is, for example, scheduled to be shut off for a two-hour interval of 3 to 5, or 5 to 7, which it would be in the wintertime, power goes out, right now, what they have to do is, they have to send a two-person crew out there to recalibrate and get your meter back in sync. So it's just cost prohibitive. So they've since gone to a new system where this is software-driven. It doesn't require folks to go out. Back in the day, they used to have meter readers that would go out and do this. That isn't the case anymore. But the point that she made is that with this system in place, there was a savings that you were incurring as a result of having your meter shut off at certain times of the day. There was no requirement that residents do that. The RMLD is not going to shut anybody's power off if they choose not to do this. In fact, what she had suggested, if, for individuals who do not have Internet access, there's a time-of-use meter that can, and she was estimating, but save about $8 a month, which sounds comparable to what you were saving before. So my suggestion, I will provide you with the person's name via email, and you can perhaps contact her and take advantage of at least one money-saving measure.
They used to have an off-peak meter in the house. Historically, when there was an analog meter, there were two meters. There was one off-peak meter for the hot water heater, and my house is wired up so that the wiring from the off-peak meter, that I used to go in directly to that, and it would be shut off for two hours a day. And the analog meter, which I would rather have back than whatever it is, the remote phelometer that they use, I don't really like. If I was, all my computers and everything in the house are hardwired. I don't like the Wi-Fi aspect of things. But they made the decision to discontinue the analog meter, and they made, which, people lost their job, they don't have the guy driving around. They talk about it, but it's savings. But just to reiterate, part of my moral objection is that I did call them several times, and they just pretty much told me to go away. They were much more responsive and polite to you than they have been to me. The lever that I sent you, that I sent to them, was a little bit aggressive. That's because of my frustration. But I think, and the new Executive Director, when she came in here, I thought she was overly aggressive to the Board, to be honest, than what Reading Light has been in the past. And so the reason for my comment isn't that I'm going to grovel around to save $8 a month. It's the process that I object to. That's why I don't participate in broadband. It's why I don't participate in cable television. It's, I think it's governmental intrusion, and people should be upset about it. If they want to have an off-peak meter in my house, like they had, my parents bought that house in '61, my mom died in '81, and I've lived there and been running the thing. And they made the decisions on their own to upgrade and change these things, and they don't give us an option to do things. And I think people should be upset. With all the NSA spying that goes on today, they say, oh, it's the technology and savings, and it's marvelous, and isn't this great? But effectively, somebody is going to know when I'm home in my house, whether or not they say that, you know, some unscrupulous person is going to have access to know when someone is operating at any of these homes that are hooked up, because they have the ability to, it says they're not going to turn off your power on holidays and peak times or whatever, but they're monitoring that. Some computer node or network or something somewhere is monitoring that, and some unscrupulous person ultimately is probably going to get in there and is going to know when people are home and not home. And I just, I think we're going down the wrong path by a lot, you know, it's, that's my comment. And I really want to talk about, I'm not asking the Board to do anything. I just wanted to make the comment so people can be aware of it. And maybe they have a similar opinion to me. And I'm sure people think I'm a nut, you know, but that's, you know.
No, I don't want to, I don't want to interrupt anybody, but I think, you know, I think, I just want, I didn't want to interrupt you because I wanted to give you ample time. But, you know, I respectfully, you know, would say that I think your point's been made. And, you know, certainly not trying to shut you down, but just don't want, you know, the conversation to, you know, go beyond that. I think the points were made, and then you've addressed it back, and any other follow-up?
I'll provide the follow-up, and you can choose to...
I appreciate that. I'm going to follow up my complaint, and that's what I do. So, I'll write letters to the Attorney General, write letters to Public Utility, and, you know, just squeak as much as I can, and maybe other people will do the same thing. That's why I made the comment.
Well, thank you for sharing that. Thank you. Okay. Did you want to say something, Mr. McCoy?
I'm good.
Okay. New business and committee reports. I'll start to my left, please.
Yeah, okay. So, been a busy summer, even though we haven't met an awful lot here. So I had a couple of things. I'll just simply, I'll do the easy stuff first, and then I'll just give the committee report. I want to compliment the entire police force and the firefighters for the police night out that happened on the 5th of August. I was there. I think Lou was there. I'm sure, I know I saw Jeff. But it was great. It was a well-attended event by the community. It was very well-run. And I was, it was a fun evening, and I hope that when they do it again, it'll be even better attended. So it was a good job by all. I also took the opportunity to attend the graduation of the Sheriff Youth Camp. Sheriff Katusian runs a week-long camp for the people in the Middlesex District, for the young kids. And ours ended on the 1st of August, and they have a little graduation ceremony. And it's just a great, it's a great thing. You see all the little kids from, I think it was Wilmington, Tuxbury, Lowell, one other community. Chelmsford, I think, was also there that day. And they come up and they give a salute to the sheriff and his little diploma and stuff. So to all the kids that had the opportunity to go there that week, I say congratulations and good job. It was, it's a good program. I'm proud of Sheriff Katusian for finding a way to keep that program alive. I'm glad to see, Judy, you're back and looking well, so it's good to have you back. I also want to just sort of have no authority in this matter. Obviously, we don't as a Board. We certainly have no jurisdiction, but, and we were sort of just talking about it briefly before we came out here today. This market basket situation continues to be on the radar screen. And it's a frustration to me as a consumer, but, you know, I'm frustrated by it in a lot of different ways, and I think we all are. And, you know, if there's any kind of message that can be conveyed out to the parties that are responsible for keeping this situation, you know, troubling to so many folks, I would be, I'd be real desirous of them trying to find a way to resolve it. And I speak, I guess, specifically to the existing CEOs in that side of the organization. You know, my daughter works there, and admittedly, she was a part-time, and it didn't affect her dramatically. But, you know, this is her first job, and it was unfortunate that she got in there, and she was building up the idea of earning a dollar and what it means to work. And she goes in to get her hours, and she's laid off. You know, that's, that's just shameful. So I think it's time, I think it's long past time, frankly, for smart, very wealthy minds to put their heads together and come up with a solution that benefits everybody. So that's my position on the market basket thing. Lastly, school is going to be starting next week. So by the time people are watching this broadcast, I ask you all to just be particularly careful on the streets when you go to work in the morning and when you're coming home at night, because the kids will be on the sidewalks, and they'll be waiting for the bus. And so just, let's all be good neighbors and watch out for each other. And the last thing I'll say is, I had the, I took the opportunity to go to the Historical Commission meeting on the 14th of July. I typically wouldn't be able to go to their meetings because they typically coincide with our Monday night meetings. But because we had a reschedule of ours last month, I was able to go to theirs. And I was going to give you a full report, and I won't do it because, frankly, you can get the information. And I'm glad to, you know, speak with you individually. But generally, in summary, their focus and their goal with regards to Whitfield is to continue to work with Jeff and Kendra and other people around Town Hall to determine what the priorities are for the town for municipal buildings going forward, and to determine how or what can be done from the historical perspective with the Whitfield, and does the Whitfield fit into any of those. They didn't have any substantive more movement on that subject at that point. There was some discussion, which I found particularly interesting and exciting, and I don't know if it's come to fruition yet, but at the time, they were talking about a time capsule that may have been in the old, the existing high school, and finding it and trying to identify where it is and who put it there and all the other stuff. So they were trying to dig up some records and some information about that from the construction of that school, and then also possibly putting one together for the construction of the new school before they cap everything off. So I don't know where that is. As of the 14th, that was just lobbed onto the radar screen. Personally, I would love for a time capsule documenting today to be put in place in that new high school before they put the last brick up. So hopefully, something will come to fruition there. Other subjects came up, but those are two of the big bullets, and I thought I'd share them with you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Salkin Chan Po brought up a market basket. I think if we see the TV news or the front page or a local newspaper or the Lowell Sun, all you do is hear about market basket. Unlike the members of the Tuxbury Board of Selectmen, I wouldn't have a problem as members of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, putting a motion out there saying we support IDT and the workers. I don't know what the Board feels about that, but, you know, I think, you know, IDT has the company at heart. And obviously, everyone's taking a stand. I don't see anybody jumping on the bandwagon of IDS. So I put a motion out there that we support IDT and the workers.
Would you, if I may, I'm sorry, would you be interested in having a letter written to some effect and having that sent to the existing, the Board of Directors?
I don't think it's going to make a difference. I'm saying is what happened. But I think the folks out there know that, you know, we support what's going on. It's really sad that all the merchants in that area are hurting by this. And it's two cousins. That's what it comes down to. And it's making the news everywhere, worldwide. They're going to make documentaries on this. There's probably going to be a motion picture made of this thing on TV screen down the road. I mean, you know, so like I said, unlike the Tuxbury Board of Selectmen, I don't have an issue taking a stand.
Well, just to take what you stated as making a motion, do we have a second for that motion, and then we can open it up for discussion?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Yes.
Madam Chair, I just don't think, and I don't feel, that a Board of Selectmen has any business making a motion to send a letter to a private business. That, yes, it affects our town with the employees and the children that work there. There's a lot of young kids that work there. But I'm not sure I get, as a Board, a sitting Board, first of all, what would it accomplish, other than saying we're part of the possible movie deal or something? As far as a political board or a sitting Board writing a letter for a private company, that it is still a private company, and I'm not sure that I would be in favor of just writing a letter for something like that. And again, I know it impacts the community, and I'm for it. Geez, I wish IDT would come back and yada, yada, yada. But as a sitting Board, I just have a problem sending a letter to a private company because it is still a private company. That's just my feeling.
I'm not saying send a letter. I think we just make a statement. I'm sure people would see that. But just to show that we support the employees and what's happening here. I think they're on the right track, the employees. That's all. I'm not saying send a letter, but I think they get the message.
Yeah. In terms of, if there's a vote on the motion, I would, I'm not in favor of taking a formal action of the Board. I'm sympathetic to the consumers and the employees alike, but for many of the reasons that Mr. Smaglia stated, I'd probably sit that one out. But I appreciate the comments that have been made by the Board, and I agree with the sentiments. I just don't want to take a formal action on behalf of the Board.
I worked at Market Basket. I think it's a rite of passage, I think, for everyone to work at Market Basket. So there's no question, you know, that I have an issue with it. I agree with the points that have been made. I think historically, for anything kind of political that kind of goes outside of our scope and jurisdiction, we haven't taken action on. You know, the last one was about, you know, equal pay for men and women, and we decided as a Board not to take that. And I'm not bringing that up just because I'm a woman and trying to sidetrack the conversation. But as a Board, we haven't taken action on some of these items that are kind of outside of our purview of managing the business of this town. Granted, we do have a market basket here, and I think the point's been made. So I definitely support the spirit of what you're intending, but from a Board perspective, I don't feel inclined to go on the record with a formal vote either. But I do want to, you know, have the motion out on the table. It's been made. It's been seconded. So we do need to call for the vote, so.
Judy, just for the record, I worked at Lucci's.
And also, I think it's also been said that we've all pretty much said what, how we feel about the whole situation.
Right.
We're in a public meeting, so.
Correct. So we'll call for the vote on the motion and take it from there. So all those in favor?
What do we vote? To?
To, vote as a Board to make a statement for support.
Show support, that's what I'm looking to do, that's all.
Correct.
All right.
So, all those in favor? One for, those that get opposed? Okay, four against. Thank you. Okay, so.
I can't see IDT.
So do you, are you all set, Selectmen?
I'm good. Thank you, yes.
Any?
Yeah, I just have a question that was brought up during the previous conversation. Mr. Foley, if you don't mind, you had mentioned about a four-year contract that you were pre, you were past president of youth hockey, so I'm sure you have some information from past. What kind of money are you, has it been in the past, per hour, per skating, and what were the previous contracts?
Um...
Is that out of line, Madam Chair?
Well, Mr. Smaglia, I don't really know the exact numbers. I just know that we were at a rate that was reasonable and comparable to a nonprofit. So if that was around the range of 140 to 190 an hour, you know, it might be in there, right? And then, when it went to for-profit, we increased 60 to 70 percent. Right now, in the contracts, again, I can get my own information, but I'm going to think a two-year contract, not a four-year contract. And the reason, I'm only privy that they, I was told that they now have a four-year contract that they have to sign, because the lease that's been re-signed by Rotundo Incorporated is a four-year contract.
Right.
So it's just kind of tied together.
Yeah, that, thank you.
And I will make myself available for all the records I had when I was, you know, the President and, you know, give you all the things in there. But there was, any time you have more questions, let me know.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I appreciate you being here tonight and participating in that part of the meeting, because I think we should have some further discussions on that. I know we're going to draft a letter for their whole Board. But thank you, Mr. Foley. That's all we have.
Okay. Anything? Is there any else?
No, thank you.
I don't have anything, per se, other than important dates, which will be forthcoming regarding Yentile. And I'll just defer to the Manager at this point to move right into important dates. I do want to just say thank you to the Board for the well wishes. I'm thrilled to be back. I know it's been kind of a, a little bit of a theme here, but the last meeting I did miss, and I appreciate Selectmen New House stepping forward and chairing the meeting. And I think we're finally on the yellow brick road, and I think my absences will be few and far between, if at all. So thank you.
Important dates. We have coming up Farmer's Market, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:30 AM to 1:30 PM. August 20th is the last date of register to vote for the state primary. Town Clerk's Office. People can come in until 8:00 PM. As was previously noted, August 26th is schools' opening day, grades 1 to 12. September 1st, Labor Day, town offices will be closed. September 2nd is the first day of kindergarten. September 3rd is another brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. September 6th, again, is a brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Also on September 6th, resume, library resume, I'm sorry, library resumes Saturday's schedule, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So Saturdays will be open again. September 7th, the Harndon Tavern has their open house from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. September 8th is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here at 7:00 PM. September 9th is the state primary. Election polls open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then September 9th is the next Yentile Farm Development.